Okay, good afternoon. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners. Commissioners check in for Monday, February 26, 2024. Although it says 2023. It's 2:05 PM. My name is Time Enter, Chair of the Board. We will have Commissioner Fournier in just a moment. We have Commissioner Edwards, Klaus, and Mahia also with us. And we have two and a half hours, if we need that, for a few pending items and then Commissioner, or typical standing Commissioner check-in items. For public virtual tenants, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. First up is pending decisions. The first is Boston Harbor Tax Title Sale. We've had a couple of discussions on this, but we have Treasurer Jeff Gadman with us, and I think the idea was to get to some kind of resolution on this proposal for a tax title sale.
Correct. Commissioners, the materials that were part of the packet for your decision or discussion today are the AIS, or the Agenda Item Summary, specifically with those attachments from this particular parcel. In addition to that, I included a map that is actually in color, which I thought was helpful just from looking at it from a little bit more holistic standpoint. So a little bit higher up and looking at the various parcels in that area. And then the last one, of course, is just the, the long list of tax title that the Treasurer is working on. Finding new homes for, or new owners. Yes. And so that's kind of the layout of this. The nomenclature on the front of the AIS is my handwriting. That has the parcel number that was in question. And then I was looking at a couple of those, one that was adjoining, and that is not tax title. That's owned by the county, not, not tax title. That's what the shorthand means. Nothing to do with an Audi TT Roadster or anything like that, but it's just, just wanted to let you know what the documents are.
I guess just to get the discussion started, Commissioner Mahia had, had initially reported that she'd met with, with residents and had concerns, kind of as I understood it generally, about tax title properties in their area. I guess we should focus today on, is there a concern on this particular piece? And what's the nature of that? And what should we do about it? I'll start with Commissioner Mahia. Where are you at on this? Or what, what can you tell us that would help us work through this?
I guess just for an update that we, Treasurer Gadman has kindly offered his time to sit down with the Boston Harbor residents and go through the tax title process. So we are working on setting a meeting with him and the Boston Harbor residents, so we can kind of have a conversation of what tax title properties look like in the Boston Harbor area. So thank you so much for, for that and lending your time to kind of go through that process with them. You know, for me, it's, I don't have any specifics on this specific property. I just had literally had that conversation with them on Friday, and then this came up on a Tuesday, and so just wanted to be sure and allow them some time to also process that information because they had just brought this as an issue and they wanted to be informed of, of kind of these, if we were either going to be selling it, or, you know, there was surplus property that we were going to get rid of. They wanted to be made aware, so that was kind of where I'm at.
Are you suggesting that we wait until they have that meeting, or is this separate enough that we can move forward on it?
I think it's separate enough where we can move forward on it. And I'm looking towards Taylor because Taylor has been communicating with them.
I'll re-tell again. They were going to submit public comment, just their feelings about the tax title property sale. I haven't done so yet, so.
So if, if I could interject here, because when we had a discussion, you brought up some of the concerns that the Boston Harbor folks have, specifically with regards to some of the properties that are out there now. Not county properties necessarily, but some of the properties, hosting tents, hosting RVs and stuff like that. And, and I ended up in that discussion having a little bit of an epiphany that I may have kind of missed something or assumed knowledge that maybe isn't there on the part of the board with regard to property ownership. And the first point is, you know, somebody who's owned a property out there for 50 or 60 years could suddenly start hosting tents or RVs on their property. There's anything they can do about it. That's one of the joys of ownership, right? But the ironic thing about tax title, you know, I, I say, and here's where my assumption is. I say, we don't own it. We're holding it in trust. And I don't know if there's a full understanding of what the bundle of rights is that comes with property ownership. And in this particular case gives me an example of real simple way to explain it. So we have full liability. We have possession of the property. We do not own it at all. If somebody were to set up a tent or an RV on this particular property, there is nothing we could do about it. We would have to go through the courts because we don't have ownership. You know, if you have ownership of a property, you go by one day and there's a tent on there, you have the right to act within the law to get that tent and any occupants removed. Same thing if, if you see somebody dumping garbage, well, then you can, you can take, within the law, to have that cleaned up, right? We can't. And when I say we have the liability, I mean, if a tree falls and hurts somebody or kills somebody, county has full liability for that. If, if somebody notifies us that there's a danger tree on the property, you guys know this, we have to remove it. But we don't have any of the rights of property ownership with regards to this.
Can you share that word?
Yes. I, I don't know as I agree with Jeff on all that because it might take going to court to get that determined. Judges have a lot of rights, it seems like, and they can impose those or not. But my concern about the whole thing is still the fairness issue. Not, not just creating a neighborhood nuisance. But so now if somebody owns it, they can still go set up a junker motor home, for an example. And we can't do a thing about it. They can let the brush grow up and the garbage stack up. Our compliance people can't keep up with those things now. And if we create this one little more location that's a problem for the Boston Harbor folks, I just don't see that as being a benefit to anybody. So my concern is that it's a fairness issue. Did we offer it like to adjoining property owners? Not some stranger from outside the area, but there's an adjoining property order by the ma- name of Mr. Chun. And as far as I know, he did not get offered this property to, maybe he wants to buy it and attach it to his property somehow, you know, avoid a property line, do a boundary line adjustment, give him another couple thousand square feet of property or whatever it is. So I'm all in favor of waiting on this particular sale until Boston Harbor sees, the community itself sees what is going to take place or potentially could take place here. And I want to make sure that any property owners have actually had an opportunity. Now, I always hear back that, well, it's on the list. If somebody's looking for property, they can go find it on the list. Well, that's not quite the same as telling a, a neighbor, maybe even a new property owner that's adjoining it, hey, this is available, and possibly we could have an auction because there'd be maybe two property owners. And, and run the price up a little bit. Because I think anytime we get more than getting less, it's better for the citizens of Thurston County when that happens. So I know when we had this discussion some ti- times back, and I thought we were going to develop a new process on how to handle this, but I haven't heard any more about that. So I don't know where we're at, and I don't know what the hurry is as to why we should just march ahead, get rid of this, end up, oh, we caused a problem. Why do we want to do something that's even got a potential for a problem? There's no rush in my estimation. So I thought Commissioner Mahia maybe was thinking of holding off on this until the community could have some knowledge about what is going on. So that's kind of where I'm at.
We're not making decisions today. We're requesting if this will be added to the agenda for March 5th, right? Because I thought that's when.
It, it's currently scheduled for the March 5th meeting because it was pulled from the last meeting and just carried forward. This was to have an opportunity to, to discuss it a little bit more in depth. And it, you could make a direction to, to pull it from that meeting, or you can make that decision tomorrow. Let me do the agenda review as well.
So can I address some of the things Commissioner Edwards had? So first of all, with regard to, if somebody decides to camp on this property, we cannot touch them. We had the same issue with seven properties in particular on the Shalhela's Western Trail that were inside City of Olympia limits over near Wheeler Avenue. And we couldn't clean the properties up. There was occasion where the Olympia Police Department and, and the City of Olympia Public Works Department as part of cleaning properties that they owned out there would do a partial cleanup on, on the properties that were tax titled as well, but it wa- it was a courtesy. There's nothing we could do about it. And so we finally negotiated with the City of Olympia to purchase those properties so that they had the ownership ability to maintain. So, yeah, we, we don't have the ownership rights to go on to this property and clean it up if we, if we saw need to. As far as offering it to the, the adjacent property owners, I am not in good conscience going to select when it comes to selling these tax title properties. I just don't think that's fair to everybody. These are on a publicly available list. With regards to changes in the process, we are working with Assistant City Manager Robin Campbell on, you know, generating the letters that we had talked about a few months ago. As far as delaying this, if somebody makes an offer on one of these properties, I don't want to delay it. I want to get it on the tax rolls. I want somebody to be able to have a ownership responsibility for it and get, get it off of our liability list.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Jeff, do you know, have, have you had the Superior Court involved in any of this through the prosecuting attorney's office on these type of examples?
Can you clarify a little bit what you're asking there?
Well, I mean, if it makes it to the Superior Court, they've got quite the authority to make determinations. And I'm just wondering if, a district court doesn't have that same authority. So Superior Court, if it gets there, if we were to take it in front of Superior Court, I believe that we do have authority to do certain things, and as a general rule, it might be under the health code because that covers anything in town. The other question that I have, if we don't know that for sure, what is the hurry? You're saying, well, you, you do want to get rid of them, and I commend you for trying to stay on top of this property disposal. My concern is that I don't want to cause any undue problems, especially when that particular community has expressed an interest. So I don't want to just sell it to anybody. And as far as the fairness issue, I think it's much fairer to the community to offer it to adjoining property owners or to the community club. Someone that, that community is more likely to be able to have a positive interaction with. I just don't see what the hurry is, and this has been on the rolls for, for years. Some of those properties we got rid of had been on the rolls for 50 years, and I think that's great. And I commend you for moving forward with it. But this is one that's in a very close-knit community of small lots, and I can see a lot of potential abuses developing by someone that might gain ownership. They don't have much invested. Now it's going to be their little own, their private campground or something.
There is a thing to stop somebody that's owned a property for 60 years from, from utilizing it as their own campground. And yeah, it, you know, whatever action needs to be taken on these properties would have to go through the courts. But then it would be even asking if, if the court even thinks we have standing because we're not an owner. So it, we wouldn't even be enforcing ownership rights because we don't have any standing in that regard.
Well, I, I don't know enough about it to argue the point. I'm just saying, why get in a hurry?
I've been in, in the property and land use business for over 37 years, and I know a thing or two. But also, as far as creating, I mean, anybody out there could sell their property to anybody, and it, it might create a problem, right? That's one of the benefits of property ownership. And the reason I'm in a hurry is because I want these properties to start generating property tax income. And I don't know, I mean, even in marketing, I mean, if, if I were to sell my house, I certainly wouldn't go to my next door neighbor and say, hey, you want to buy it? First, I, I would just put it on the market.
Yeah, but you would probably put a sign up so the neighbor would know. Most people put a sign up on their property, and then that's how the neighborhood knows. We didn't even do that. If we would put a sign on that property and say, this property is being, is considered to be, being sold by our county treasurer, I think that might suffice. But somehow we need to let the community know that things are about to change from whatever they are. So I'm just going to ask that we remove this until we get a few more answers on this because I don't see that there's a problem with waiting another couple of weeks or whatever it is. When's that meeting coming up with the Boston Harbor Community Club?
So we've been in touch with them. I, and we're working on scheduling right now, so not sure on the exact date on when we're going to have the meeting. And then just to kind of, so when I spoke with the Boston Harbor folks, they were interested in the county purchasing the property, not them. So I, unless something has changed, you know, we're, I, I guess my next question is for you, Treasurer Gadman. How about if there's, the association comes forward and they say, well, you know, if we're interested in purchasing the rest of the tax title properties in this area and what's the, you know, does it move to auction? What's the process for that procedurally? Like what, what is the correct process to follow?
If, if we have more than one person or entity that shows interest in one of these properties, we do take it to auction. That is not the preferred route because it is a lot more expensive and it takes a lot more staff time than, than this. So yeah, I, yeah, if the association came forward, then we would have to, you know, bump it up to the next level in the process.
So I'll just, I will clarify with the association, right? Is it a process that they want to, they want to buy the properties, or are they just not comfortable with the selling of the tax title properties? And then that's a process that you, you know, when we have our meeting, that I think you can walk them through and kind of know kind of the risk of having the tax title properties and kind of, you know. So I, I will try to get more information. My recommendation, if it's okay, Chair, is to leave it on, and then I'm happy to report back next Monday at our Commissioner's check-in on kind of what I've heard back. And if at that time they, the association is, has told me that they're interested in pursuing that option, then we'll have that conversation with the Treasurer and, and remove it off. If they are not interested in purchasing it, then I, I don't see another avenue for, for this unless the county wants to keep the tax title property, and then that's another discussion I think the Board needs to have.
So there's one proposal to remove this. There's one proposal to keep it on, but how Commissioner Mahia circle back next week? How do the other commissioners feel about those two options, which is what I've heard so far? Commissioner Klaus?
I feel like Commissioner Mahia's suggestion is probably best. She's been talking to people there, and I trust her recommendation.
Okay, Commissioner Fournier?
Sorry, I'm having a hard time talking, but I, I think Commissioner Mahia's suggestion sounds prudent.
Okay, very good. So we'll keep it on?
Okay, Chair?
Yeah, sir, go ahead.
One other thing, it was mentioned that the County Public Works actually owns the other side of this lot. Is that right?
That's correct.
Has anybody said anything to them if this would enhance their situation, parking? I don't know. Anything like that? I mean, yeah, we might as well ask them as well. I think, what was the price? Like $3,000 or something?
Can I, we did, and actually, yes. So Jennifer Walker from Public Works was actually in that meeting that I had with them, and that was one of the questions. Can Public Works use this property since it's adjacent to the sewer plant, right? You know, for future expansion or any other purpose? And what Jennifer relayed back was that, no, there is no, like, need or intention or future use for potential future use for that property adjacent to the sewer plant.
Given, given the capital facility needs in Boston Harbor, there's no need. We have adequate property at the sewer treatment plant to address any emergent needs that we might have from a facility standpoint, so there is no. So there is no public need from that utility to have this tax title parcel. And we've also are not, it's not a current priority to try to go through a process of surplusing the other county-owned parcels in that area so that we can have a thoughtful conversation with the community.
And Jennifer actually had a conversation with Eric in my office about properties in that area. And there's a provision in the law that actually says a local government cannot just buy property to sit on it. That it actually has to have a legitimate public purpose.
That's interesting.
Sounds like we're got a plan for next week or whatever.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
So circle back.
Thank you. And I just want to let you know, Commissioner Mejia, whatever your planning for meeting, Wednesday is a really, really full day for me on end of the evening, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Next up is public hearing follow-up. 8:25 Forest Lands Conversion Code update from February 6th. And, I don't know what it's on. We have Dana Bowers and Ashley Rai.
Hi, it's nice to see you again this afternoon. Ashley Rai, Community Planning Manager, and joined here by Dana Bowers, Associate Planner. This is a follow-up to the public hearing that was recently held on the Forest Lands Conversion Update. There were a few questions raised at the hearing as well as written comments that were submitted around the Forest Lands Conversion ordinance. And the board directed staff to go back and take a look at if there were changes that could be made to the proposed package of code updates to respond to those written comments. So Dana's put together a great package with a table that sort of goes through each one of those line by line and don't have a presentation prepared. It's really just an exercise to review those changes, see if the board has some questions or further things they'd like to see before we, before the board takes action at a future meeting. Is it okay if we start with the table?
Start with the table.
So, thanks for that introduction, Ashley. We are just kind of looking through those items. I tried to summarize some of this I could because we had concerns that were overlapping in some cases or talked to talk to the same item. And so you'll see we only have about five items, but you know, if you go through the comments, there are probably, you know, more than that, but just kind of putting them together. So for example, the first one, house sitting, siding, excuse me. You know, there were concerns about whether there'd be enough space given the retention requirements. And then also that protecting six inch trees may not be as practical as, you know, in terms of allowing that house siding. So in order to address that concern, I created two categories of significant trees. So then when we go into the code, Table 1727400-1, you can see that now there's a significant tree. Did I call it A or B? I'm sorry. I want to look at it, make sure I get it right. Significant trees, six to 12 inches and significant trees, 12 to 24 inches. And that is the code page 21. So that was in order to help the value of those smaller six inch trees be less and to increase the value of the 12 to 24 inch trees. Then splitting them into two categories allowed for that distinction. So the landmark tree definition, we had some concern that adding the different species of trees at different diameters might be confusing and costly when it comes to right-of-way maintenance for county roads especially. And so we removed for that definition, and you'll see it right in the table as well, remove Cascara, Madrona, Pacific Yew, Lodgepole and Vine Maple from that definition and created a new definition, a new category, excuse me, uncommon trees. And they would include those species at those diameters. The reason why we didn't want to not have those species called out is because they're uncommon enough and diversity is, is a hallmark of a healthy forest. And so we want to make sure that we're, we are retaining species that are not necessarily commercial species on sites that aren't necessarily going to be for commercial production. So for, for example, you know, the, the open space places around residential developments and things like that. Those are great opportunities to have those other species. Whereas commercial foresters are going to be logging and planting back in more unified species like Douglas fir or commercially relevant species, whatever fits the site. So that's why we changed that. Then the culturally modified tree definition, there was some concern that culturally modified trees might just be discovered and then there's not a real way to plan around them. So, which is obviously, you know, a concern with any cultural resource. You know, we do have cultural resource, non-intentional findings anytime we develop or disturb the ground. And so along with those same protocols, you know, as, as we register those, those resources, that's not our list to keep. That is the tribe's list to keep. And for us to have a list of our own wouldn't necessarily honor the fact that that is their cultural resource. So, you know, walking that line of understanding that we have this, these resources that are and need to be protected, but also are in someone else's care, then adding the modification that they're on a registered list to be managed by a recognized agency, our tribal nation. And that provides the opportunity for it to be on a registered list, but yet not, not that it wouldn't be protected, I guess. Is that, is that clear as my?
So, I mean, is that, I don't really know if that's meaningful because I don't know how many tribes or agencies maintain registered lists of trees that have been cut into and scarred by humans? And that's a thing?
Yes. So peeling the bark off of cedar trees specifically, it was a cultural practice for way marking, but also, I mean, the Forest Service has large scars in trees across the nation, but in the Pacific Northwest as well, that literally have cardinal directions on them. And, and you can see a couple of examples on the National Park website, for example. So those trees are protected just because they mark a his, their historical value, their cultural value. So if the trees are listed or if they're found and then can be registered, then they would be part of this list. It's almost like the bush butternut tree, for example. It's registered on our national, on our historical register. So if we come across that tree, we're not going to, we're not going to remove it without kind of going through these provisions and making sure that we're having adequate protections. So even at that, it's 70% of those trees kept. And for these historically, these cultural ones, they, they have their own set of protections that would maybe mandate them to be protected under different cultural resource provisions. If that makes sense. So then, as those ones are?
It's basically recognizing that there are different standards that apply to them that fall outside of county. And so our code speaks to it, recognizes it, but doesn't duplicate it.
And we're not retaining a list or?
No. Not anything over and above our historic, historic list that already exists that already has, I think, three trees on it.
Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
Uh, as far as you know, did, did the issues brought up by the master builders in their letter, it was kind of a encapsulated everybody's concerns. Did those all get addressed in this?
Yeah, that is this list.
Yeah, okay, good enough. I just wondered. Thank you.
Yeah, no worries. And the next one on the list, if we're free to go on?
Go ahead.
Okay. So the wild and urban interface is, was also addressed. And that code, so there's a building code right now. It has not been implemented, but is due for implementation in March this year. So we're kind of getting ahead of that because this code hasn't been updated for 20 years and we don't, we hope not to expect to get in it and update it again. Yet wildfire is coming on our doorstep. We have indications that we're going to have more and more wildfires in the next 20 years. And so being proactive and putting a definition for wild and urban interface, even though it's not listed as a building code definition at this moment, prepares us for that. Prepares us for that fire regime. All right. And it is using the state's definition of wildfire, so we're not creating something from scratch. It's, or, excuse me, wild and urban interface, it uses their own definition.
So when you're saying in the chart, addition of the definition is responsive to community concerns about defensive space? How does that work?
Okay, so one of the concerns was that, from the community, was that we would have enough space around houses. That defensible space includes that, that space around houses that protects houses from wildfire encroaching in on their house.
Oh, those concerns. There's also a whole set of concerns that the requirements are going to create completely unnecessary tree removals around homes and are basically overreach.
So that's why we wanted to stick with the state definition because as that gets sorted out at the state level, then that will be the definition we adopt. Also, from a county perspective, a lot of those concerns are more relevant to the urban areas because they have smaller lots and they have less space to protect trees. So as we have larger lots, then we have more space to keep the trees away from the homes and still keep trees.
Yeah, the, I know that the legislature is dealing with the wild urban updates even this session. And so this code is just sort of a reference to the state rather than, again, like duplicating it or setting up a standard that would only apply to Thurston County. So as the state one changes and hopefully changes to be more flexible for places like Thurston County, this would, this would also sort of pull in that flexibility.
All right. So the retention requirements on significant legacy trees. And this responds to the comments that were made in person about how do we deal with a half a tree? How do we keep a half a tree? So we just added rounding language. So if the tree, if it's 2.5 trees, then we round up. If it's 2.4 trees, then we round out. The timber harvest permit documentation was pointed out that not all harvests require timber harvest permit documentation. So that reference may actually be burdensome to provide a timber harvest. And the intent was that it would be streamlined with DNR, the Department of Natural Resources, harvest processes for the, for the harvest permits. So instead of adding undue burden to have a timber harvest done when it wouldn't necessarily, then we removed it, just basically clarifying and adding, not adding additional burden in that case. So that is for that permit, that's a double permit. It's the, it's the conversion option permit. So we review that one for the critical areas and the state reviews that one for the timber harvest. So they're already, the timber harvest will be reviewed by state foresters. So that's why we're concerned about not being overburdenous. And then the last one, the alternative definition for critical root zone. As I did some further research on this, you know, Department of Natural Resources themselves use the one foot for every inch of diameter base height as a critical root zone. So we're, we would stick with that rather than updating the definition to the, there was a suggested definition in the comments.
For drip line?
For drip line, right. And so the, the issue being that since most of our trees are conifers, their drip line is going to be quite more narrow than their root zone. And so if we just protected the drip line, which is the canopy area, then we'd have a lot of root zone that wasn't being protected. So that's the main reason for sticking with the Department of Natural Resources definition there.
When you say protected, what do you mean, protected from what?
Okay, so this, the critical root zone is referenced because of when we do development, it's the area that needs to be kind of fenced off in order not to impede on those roots and cause harm to the tree. So that as we're retaining trees, then they are healthy and, and last longer and grow and do the things we need to do.
It's like a single-family home construction. You don't want to be excavating the critical root zone.
Is that what, one of the comments, commenters in writing was Ken Miller. And I remember him using drip line and I was like, you know, I didn't even quite understand what he was talking about. Is that, was that, was this his concern?
There were two concerns. He talked about the drip line as, as it related to the, the density. And so when he was thinking about drip line, he was thinking 100 trees and their drip line and how to work around them all. So it's somewhat of a concern of his. But then the other concern came from Stephen Bernath. He's a previous Department of Natural Resources employee. And he was concerned that we wanted to have the drip line adequately, adequately covered and also allow for development because these are conversion permits. And so we need, you know, in order to save that 70-year-old tree, then making sure we have adequate roots at that tree and we're not creating an issue where that, you know, that tree is going to die because of the development that's done beside it, but not leaving enough cover.
So this comes into when you're like trying to site the project?
Yes.
You have to leave the critical roots in?
Yes, exactly. That's part of the site plan. So that's the table.
Questions on the table?
Thank you.
Commissioner Edwards?
I guess, uh, on that drip line versus the distance out, is it like, does it end up being three times the space compared to the drip line? Is that kind of what that comes out to?
Not typically. And typically for broadleaf trees, it is the drip line. This measurement of, you know, how many feet per inch of diameter base height ends up being drip line for those broadleaf trees. However, just because conifers are more, you know, they have needles and not leaves, then that drip line is so much narrower. And, you know, looking at our landscape, we have more conifers. So making sure that we're providing adequate coverages for those conifers is kind of why we're looking at that.
Yep, and I guess that's where I'm coming up with the three times what the drip line would be from a fir tree.
From a fir tree, it ends up being more like double, not, not usually three times, but more like double.
I, I guess, uh, as builders become familiar with what the code requires, if they run into problems, they might take extra trees out that they would not normally take out even prior to putting in the application. That's what I'm wondering, if that isn't going to be a problem. But I guess we'll see how it all fits.
And, and to allow that flexibility, Commissioner, is why, you know, the planning commission was pretty satisfied with, you know, protecting 70% even though community had some concerns about protecting 70 rather than 100%.
Okay. Okay, sounds like you got it figured out. Thanks.
No worries.
Timber cruise?
Yes.
Means what?
Timber cruise is an industry term that is the measuring of trees, board feet, like in commercial value of trees while they're still standing. So a forester walks and does a plot and only measures, you know, ten percent of the trees, but can get a very clear estimate of what the value of those trees are.
So can you walk me through this fifth, one, two, three, four, five, sixth line item?
Sure.
Timber harvest permit documentation from timber cruise documentation required. Assessor and Department of Revenue notified upon harvest. The proposed change is to remove timber cruise reference and definition for clarity, add DOR.
Okay, so the timber cruise, we only had, we only had a little line in the conversion option harvest permit about requiring a timber cruise documentation. So, we removed the requirement to have the timber cruise documentation because not all, not all harvests are going to get a timber cruise. That was a misunderstanding of the process.
Can you boil this down for me and tell me what's being accomplished, like what?
Sure.
What, what, what does this change helping? What situation? Is it making it simpler? Is it for who? And, and what's the, what's the practical effect of this change?
So, when we're looking at that conversion option harvest permit, it's the double permit. And so, we are essentially, the goal is to help people see the value and benefit of that permit when they're not sure if they're gonna convert or not. So, we want people to try and get that permit because it allows us to review their, their critical areas. So, that's, that's the value add for us. Otherwise, they just go to the DNR, which is quick, simple, easy, cheaper. They do that and they have a six year wait before they can convert. And so, some people do that. They just say, I don't know if I'm gonna convert now, but I'll take my chances and wait six years. We want to provide people with an opportunity, a doorway, because in other sections of this code, we closed another door. The moratoriums, we singed up very tight so that we don't have as many opportunities for people to do that. They can't get a waiver anymore. They can only get the administrative release. So, closing that door tighter means we need to open a door a little bit more to allow for that balance. This conversion option harvest plan has already, I mean, we're reviewing the critical areas and DNR is already reviewing the forestry pieces. So if they're reviewing the forestry pieces for us to re, to require to review the forestry pieces when we don't have a staff of foresters, looks like extra work on us and not very much benefit. If the documentation was already going to be done, then it was like freebie bonus, but it's not required in all cases. Does that make sense?
And somebody brought this to your attention and this?
Yes.
During the conference call?
Yep. The other piece is the Department of Revenue. Our current code says that the documentation will go through our assessor's office, but not to the Department of Revenue. So it's a tiny clarification and nuance. Because the Department of Revenue really is the body that controls the long-term forestry tax program. So, unless it gets all the way to the Department of Revenue, then that tax incentive and disincentive isn't working well. We can assume that our assessor's office is doing that job, or we could just write it in that it needs to be done.
Any other commissioner questions on this? Is there other stuff you wanted to review Dana or is this?
That was really the bulk of it, yeah. Wanted to make it simple.
Okay. Let's see.
So would the board like another briefing on this topic or move the item forward for final decision on one of your upcoming meetings? Either March fifth, which is really quick, or the, the March nineteenth meeting?
Chair?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I guess, if we're gonna move this forward, I would opt for the later date that Rob said because that way if people are, do get a chance to review this particular session, they've got a little bit of time to comment, I guess, to us as commissioners. But, other than that, might as well get her done.
I think I agree with that approach. Is that okay with everyone? March nineteenth? I see a concurrent on that, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next up is commissioner items. This is commissioner check-in. Usually we have this split into two. The first being any reports on, like assigned committees. And there may not be any of consequence, but I'll open the floor for any committee reports folks wanna make before we move on to just random commissioner items. I had a lot meeting. I can say I was elected president of the board, so that was exciting. And had a canvassing board meeting. We finalized the election for the February election. And I had an Alliance for Healthy Sound meeting, which is the LIO, it's called. It's the lead integrating organization?
Local.
Local integrating organization, close. For Sam and Recovery. And this was a council, there was an executive committee, but this was the full council meeting. We had presentation. One of our own planning commissioners, Mr. Day, actually the chair of our planning commission, in his role at the Department of Ecology, gave a presentation that was good. So those are basically my committee's reports. Anybody else?
I attended inner city transit meeting and Emily Bergkamp was honored for her twenty years of service to inner city transit, so that was pretty exciting. Other than that, not anything really major to report. Pac Mountain, we had a board meeting, board meeting and went to retreat. I guess one of the things that of note that kind of connects with what we do is so Pac Mountain did not receive the T S T funding this year. And so consequently, they made significant adjustments to the pathways home program. So, that program offers transition services pre and post release, both Thurston County and Lewis. And so, as part of the revised plan, what they did is they had to terminate the the subcontractor and they actually moved the program in-house with an in-house staff and they're going to be able to continue to provide those services to Thurston County and Lewis. Just kind of based on that shift that they, that they did, so.
Okay. Anything else from board?
I have no report.
Okay, we'll go to commissioner items. We can just go around the horn, I guess. I have a few, but.
I have to step away for a meeting really quick. Can I just do one?
Go ahead.
And it's for a short presentation, so I should be back. But, so Inaco did this project and this was basically The Marvelous Adventures of Countyland and it's a book that basically explains county government. March is National Reading Month, so I spoke with Megan and I'm hoping that all commissioners will hopefully participate and kind of just reading parts of the book. And there's gonna be a video that's gonna be done, kind of going through the rules of government and commissioners each reading a part of the book.
Oh, on a video?
So, hopefully, you can all participate on that.
That sounds fun.
Yeah, that's cool. Okay, that was, that was it. So Megan, or, yeah, we'll be coordinating with all of your aides.
Can we, do you have a sec, one more second? Can we hit that item that you talked about? It was on my list as well, about reclassifications?
Yes.
Is that too big a topic?
Well, I was just gonna ask, since Maria's gonna be here tomorrow, that's when I was gonna.
Okay, so I was gonna bring up this thing about reclassifications and I guess Commissioner Mahia has requested that we fold it into tomorrow's planning session, so we can just defer on that one and talk about it then. And the issue being, at the end of last year, we talked about having a process for dealing with the reclasses. We didn't include most of them in the budget. We've had a few piped through, but Public Works is saying that they're still understanding that reclasses are frozen and we have our class and comm studies. So just trying to figure out what we're doing so we have a consistent approach is something we can talk about tomorrow, if that's okay. Okay, go ahead Commissioner Mahia. Commissioner Edwards, I think you had walked out of a meeting last, because you had another obligation. And Commissioner Mahia brought up the idea of us asking the prosecuting attorney, since we're down to two meeting, two formal, two, two P M. Meetings per month, sometimes three, but for a certain fifth, could attorney be present for those? Maybe, you know, since we have a few, a little bit less of them, that might be a compromise with the workload and stuff. And so, I was asked by the board to send a communication to that effect to John Toonheim. And I did that and then I got a response back from him and I think that was distributed to all commissioners, so hopefully you've looked at that. And I guess I just wanted to ask, I didn't respond to Mr. Toonheim because I wanted to have this discussion about what, what we'd like to do as a next step. It sounded like he was open to the concept but wanted a little more information from us about what we perceive as the value, given that, you know, they, they can't make a lot of real-time decisions on key issues. Of course, I've seen Commissioner Mahia was talking about how she's on many boards and can, and see many councils where they, they have that. I've certainly been on boards where O P M A type stuff, procedural Roberts Rulesy stuff comes up and the, the board's counsel is kind of an expert in that area and gives direction and advice on procedural matters. I've seen that be helpful, but, you know, other substantive stuff comes up and it's probably not gonna get answered in the moment, so I guess I wanted to hear back from the board how you'd like me to respond to John, John Toonheim about the next step in this conversation.
Are you, I guess that question was to me, sir?
Yeah, all of you, but sure, I would like to start with you, sir.
Okay, well, I'm with Commissioner Mahia on this, that I've been an advocate for this for quite some time. And I think even our discussion today with the treasurer left a few issues of, well, how is it handled? You know, if it gets to certain points or maybe liability exposure issues. Not just on our discussion today, but many times it comes up where it gets delayed because, well, we gotta get word back from counsel about something. And it's not like we're asking about a legal opinion, we're just asking for guidance on how it all fits. So, I don't, I don't think we're gonna put them on the spot. Myself, I did read your correspondence and John's return, but I, I just don't think it's too much of an inconvenience for us as commissioners to have legal counsel say, well, no, that falls within the guidelines or, under the Open Public Meetings Act, you can do this. And I think it gives us a certain amount of protection, even though legal might be wrong. But at least, under the Island County ruling, and I know that's not the name of it, that took place in twenty seventeen, the Supreme Court of Washington said that the county prosecutor can be, can only be our legal advisor. And so, because of that, some of these other boards and commissions, they probably have independent counsel that maybe attends too. But in our case, that's all we're allowed to have is the county prosecutor or his designee. So, I, I just think it makes sense. We're, we don't meet that often, but we should have somebody available to us. And I don't even know that they need to be in physical attendance as much as if they're listening to the, what's going on and maybe they're in attendance remotely. I, I'm not locked into any one thing. I just think it'll give us an opportunity to provide better government to our citizens, that's all.
So, I'm very aware of your position on that and, and I'm, and just to clarify, the direction I had from the board was to make this compromise proposal to ask them to be physically present at the two P M. Tuesday board meetings. Given the response I got from Mr. Toonheim, my question for the board is, what do you want me to say next or what does the board wanna do to advance this conversation? We could drop it and we'll probably never see an attorney at two P M. Tuesday. If we wanna try to advance that, we'll need, I think, to have a conversation with, with the prosecutor and address some of the things he raised in his email.
Chair, could I ask one clarification? On, when you said, I guess, because I did miss part of that, I had another commitment. So, it's physically, when you say physically present, does that mean Zoom or no, or only physically present? What's the deal?
Yeah, I said physically. I guess, we didn't say Zoom or not Zoom. The idea was they could be there to answer questions in the moment, in real time during the Tuesday two P M. Meeting. And Commissioner Mahia made that proposal because she thought that maybe, you know, we heard the concerns during the present, maybe you weren't there, but John got into that during his prosecutor expansion session that he had with the new commissioners and talked about workload issues and whatnot. And so, Commissioner Mahia was just thinking with the reduced, with the slightly altered schedule that maybe that's a compromise, trying to get, you know, a little bit of what you're after. We know it's not exactly, it's not completely what you're after, but it, we thought that, Commissioner Mahia thought maybe that was a way to get a, a step in the right direction and if that shows real value, you know, then, then we can expand on that if it's really, it's putting out a lot of fires and showing a lot of value.
Sure. No, no, I, I, I'm with Commissioner Mahia. I think that was a good compromise. With, with, whatever the board wants to do, I'm with you.
Should I ask commissioner, could I, should I ask at, at, at the prosecutor's convenience him to come in on a Tuesday morning or something and kind of just do a Q and A on the topic? That work?
I, I think the Tuesday morning would work or pretty much any of our briefing times, even, you know, Monday afternoon, depending on his schedule and availability.
Maybe I can have Tom Cena reach, work with John Toonheim's assistant to work out, basically he could come at his convenience. A Monday afternoon, like whatever, we'll, we'll work him into a schedule to talk about the issues that he came up with. Alright, that works for me. That works for you guys.
Yep.
Very good. I have one other thing myself and then I can open it up to anyone else. Tonight, I'm gonna be attending the Veterans Advisory Board meeting. And the reason is because I had a meeting with Mark Moffett who expressed the concerns they had about the, 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 the thought we had about the assessor position and the, you know, the additional capacity in that fund and them not really feeling, understanding how we got there. And I kind of explained what I think is the board's position to Mark, who seemed to understand a little better where we came from. And he said he thought that the Veterans Advisory Board would like to hear that from a commissioner. And since I'm available, their meeting tonight of the veterans have at six, I'm gonna go. So I guess I just wanted you guys to know that. And if there's any particular thing you want me to say, I'm happy to convey any messages from the board in the whole, as a whole. I'm mainly planning to just talk about how we, we were not trying to interfere with any of the programming that the Veterans Advisory Board does. This was not in, this was not an attempt to reduce a program or eliminate a program to shift money into another priority. It was using the additional capacity in that fund to, to, to kind of meet a need and it happened during the budget deliberations, the final week, so there really wasn't a chance to circle back and present to them what we were doing. Apologize for that, but according to the state auditor's analysis that's been done, we are allowed to use the fund for that purpose if we expand the policy document that governs the, the Veterans Advisory Fund. And so, that may be a document that routes through the Veterans Advisory Board and they may see that. And I, I wanted them to have quite, a chance to ask me questions about why they would see that and what it's all about and how we got there. And that's kind of what I was gonna talk about, but I'd happy to include your guys' thoughts or comments as well. And I wanted you to know I was going to do that.
I think the only thing I'd add is just tell them thanks for what they're doing.
Yeah.
I know they're in the right spot. I've been working with them before.
Yeah. Yeah, I wanna make sure, Mark said they kind of felt like they were, you know, they didn't, they were surprised between that money and some of the money for the T cap, they were surprised and concerned about not being included. So, I just wanna go address that, make sure they don't, they understand how we. So, I just want to go address that, make sure they don't, and they understand how we ended there. It was, you know, during the budget process. And again, we were pulling anywhere we could find additional financial capacity, whether it's foundational public health services or treatment sales tax or, um, you know, here, there and everywhere, trying to make all the pieces fit for the budget, but. Okay, well, those were my Commissioner items. Does anyone have anything else you'd like to address today?
No, sir.
I guess just a really quick update. I don't have any major things. Um, last Thursday, I had a pretty packed day. I met with some folks in the morning regarding, um, legacy forests and D N R and cutting and things like that. And then I went toured Community Action Council. And I also had a tour of Public Defense Office and a conversation with, um, Patrick O'Connor, um, and then had coffee with, um, John Toonheim and discussed, um, some ideas. I'm, I'm kind of brainstorming some potential subcommittees through Law and Justice Council. One that I have in mind, and this is just brand new concept that I've only discussed with other people like one time. But, potentially a subcommittee on the Blake legislation and, um, figuring out how to like find folks who are eligible for the L F L reimbursements. Because we know that the state has given a lot of money to this and the money's not really being spent. So, how can we increase outreach efforts in a way that doesn't cost the county a bunch of money? And I have some ideas that I think could work, um, if we had a subcommittee through Law and Justice. And I think that there would be some interested parties on Law and Justice Council who might be, um, eager to kind of get that going. I think it would be really significant for Thurston County to lead the way. I think I heard at the last Law and Justice meeting that we have spent a larger portion of the funds allocated to us on L F L reimbursements. But it's still like, I don't know. I was told a fraction of what we've received from the state has been spent. I don't know if that's, I don't know how accurate that is. I don't know how much we've spent compared to what we've received or what we have allocated for this. But, um, I think it would be really important for Thurston County to kind of lead the way on this effort and ensure that people are getting what they're entitled to receive back. So, um, otherwise, I don't have any other updates from last week, so.
Commissioner Edwards, any, any final shot?
Uh, no, sir, I think I'm good. See you tomorrow.
All right, see everybody tomorrow, we are adjourned.